Hi, welcome to tonight's meeting. June 5th. First thing we have are minutes from the previous meetings of May 15th and the end of fiscal year meeting on May 31st. We also received copies of that to review them. I'd ask, first of all, on the May 31st meeting, on the first page, under the vouchers, it says $113,347.90. That could be $112,422.30. So, we need to make that amendment on that, on those draft minutes for your review. So, 113347 to 112422.30. So, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
I move we accept the minutes as corrected.
Okay. Okay, discussion? Hold on in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion's carried. Next thing you should have are the bills. We received an email out. Are there any additions or additions to this, Mr. Carter?
No, there is not.
Okay. All right, can I have the motion to pay the bill as presented?
I'd make the motion to pay the bill as presented.
I'll second. Discussion. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Uh, Madam President, we have some correspondence.
We do, we have two letters this evening. The first one is dated May 19th, 2017. Dear Mayor, let eternal Village Board of Trustees, please accept this letter as official notification that I will be retiring from the Village of Ross's Point effective August 19th, 2017. Sincerely, Kim Jane Bennet. We need a motion to approve.
I move we accept his resignation or retirement with regrets and, and congratulations on his retirement.
I'll second that.
For any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And the second letter is dated June 2nd. Dear Village Trustees and Mayor, on 31 May 2017, I signaled Mr. Cody O'Brien when he was mowing near the boat launch. He was very obliging, shut down the mower, and took time to listen to my concerns. I mentioned that there were trees beginning to grow in the shrubs placed around the gazebo slash pier area. I asked if he would take time to remove the trees. Without any hesitation, Mr. O'Brien said he would take care of the invading sapling growth. To my delight, Mr. O'Brien and his crew cleaned up the trees the next morning. I would like to express my thanks to Mr. O'Brien. I enjoy our village, the improvements we have maintained waterfront, our parks, and our sidewalks. By removing the sapling growth, our scenic views, our scenic areas remain beautiful. Mr. O'Brien was under no obligation to oblige my request, but did so happily. I would also like to express thanks to all the village employees. The love of the village shows. I know it takes time to ensure the village streets are clean, safe, and beautified. Village employees ensure that our electric, water, and sewer run smoothly, and for this I am very grateful. Many times I have stopped village employees and asked for help or information, and they are always willing to assist. I am proud to live in our village. Please keep up the good work and know that you are appreciated. Sincerely, Becky Reed.
Next letter, we appreciate it from a resident who's involved, continues to be, so we thank her for her thoughts and work. All right. We have a couple of appointments to be made. Their terms are up, and they've agreed to be reappointed. First, to the zoning board of appeals, I'd like to appoint Patricia Burkett. Could I have a motion accepting her appointment?
I'm gonna put motion accepted.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Secondly, my pleasure to appoint Mr. John Cooper to the planning board for, I don't know how many times, but it continues to be, I'd like a motion to approve Mr. Cooper's nominee, or appointment, rather.
So moved.
Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Okay. Uh, as you all know, I attended the first countywide shared services initiative core panel meeting on May 17th. And present at the meeting besides the, she was chaired by the county legislator, the county administrator, uh, and all the town supervisors in Clinton County, and all the mayors, including Mayor Plaschek, are by statute on that board. Um, it was our first meeting together. We received a presentation from Department of State, New York State, Department of State regarding initiative, and there were some suggestions put forth by, by various members of that panel. Uh, one of them was a countywide assessing service. Um, and again, that's being, you know, that's just, these are just initial thoughts that were brought out. Another one was a countywide grant writing service. Uh, it was quite a bit of time was spent on a way to centralize animal control. There was discussions of health insurance through NYSIP, which the county carries and is relatively inexpensive. Uh, there was discussion about a county code enforcement officer, and that would be only building codes, not zoning. It'd have to be a zoning enforcement officer in each municipality or town, as zoning laws are particular to each, you know, each area. So, one person couldn't be familiar with all of it. So, you know, like in our case, if this were to come to fruition, our code enforcement officer, we could be converted to a zoning enforcement officer and reduce those other duties and commensurate savings and salary if that were to happen. But, again, these are just initial, initial ideas. There was some discussion about having an IT resource person to, you know, service various computer systems throughout the county, rather than each village or town employing their own. Uh, some towns suggested assisting the county with snow and ice trash removal. Some of the supervisors suggested that, and that was kicked around. Uh, there was mention of tax collection versus having a tax collector. They could statutorily be able to use banks. Again, these, this was the first meeting, and just trying to get used to what's going on. The next one is during the day, this coming Wednesday, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And they had, they're doing it during the day because trying to find a night when all supervisors and all the mayors were not at a board meeting was getting difficult. So, they're gonna have that evening meeting on the 7th, or a day meeting on the 7th, and then the evening meeting on the 21st. Of course, everyone's encouraged to, to attend all of them, and any ideas that you all want brought forward, as, as you have before, I brought some of those forward. I did bring forward the idea regarding, you plan for dissolution for the Ross's Point P.D., and having the Clinton County Sheriff's Office take over seven-day-a-week, 24-hour coverage of the village. Um, the panel was very receptive to the idea. They said they thought it would be beneficial to all of northern Clinton County. And, you know, they, they said, you know, generally that would be an agreement between this village and the sheriff, so it wouldn't involve other ones. The, Mr. Greg Martin, the Champlain Mayor, was very much in support of it, and said he'd like to see more sheriff patrols up here, and if they have a substation here, as they would under the plan, they would be here. So, that was, it was well received, and it's, it's the first step, and as we move forward in the process, that's something that, that we're gonna have to continue to look at. So, that was basically how the meeting went. It was two hours, and, you know, again, just feeling out of, of how everyone, everyone felt about it. Now, today, I had a meeting this morning from 8:00 to 9:30 with the county administrator and the county sheriff, um, regarding, you know, specifics of our plans, or what, what would be worked out, you know, the framework for developing this, having the sheriff take over law enforcement activities. And, you know, the sheriff is enthusiastic about it. He said by policy, they're not, if, if a community has their own police department, they do not go in there unless they're called, and that's why you haven't seen as much of them here, but they will certainly be available. They're, they have sent one of their majors up here to, to review what we have, and, you know, what, what would have to happen in order to abolish the police department. And as you know, it, it won't be quite as easy as abolishing the court, because we have to deal with, you know, the evidence, records retention, we have to migrate the records, uh, on, the computer records, from our ORI to the sheriff's ORI. We have to get rid of our originating numbers, identifier for our, our things. Sheriff estimates there's about 160 hours it'll take to make, to do this, to do this transition. He said the inventory of police uniforms, badges, et cetera, is very important in terms of, you know, we have to account for all of them. You don't want badges laying around or uniforms where, you know, someone could misrepresent themselves if they got their hands on it. And again, they're willing to, and they will do all of the closeout on this, so that'll save us the cost of doing it. If they don't do it, we're gonna have to hire somebody to do it. And, and they said that, that would be, that would be part of it. They also said, as we discussed at the last meeting, Trustee Arnold, you brought this up, they would like to have their boat docked, the village docked. And they asked if there was a possibility of, in the winter, storing that in our garage now where Lepa Tahoe is. Uh, it would, again, it's, all of this goes towards savings. It would be their savings, you know, that they could get matched for, and it's something that, you know, we'll, we'll have to look at and see, see what we've got. Um, in terms of their response, the sheriff is all dispatched, they're all dispatched by 911. They're right over all 800 megahertz, so they're, they're 911 dispatched, and it's closest, closest car response. Um, so, obviously, if there was something going on that required a 911 call, if you, you know, if you saw an accident, an altercation, an assault, or whatever, you called 911, they would, they would be dispatched for the closest car. And they feel like there could be more of them up here as a result of this, so they would more than likely be the ones here, but the state police, if they were closer, could be called. More importantly, if, let's say, our clerk or administrator, or would you guys, any of us, get constant complaints about, it might be a residence that's getting, you know, in-and-out traffic, suspicious traffic, or excessive noise from a particular area, or name it trash, whatever, you let them know, he will assign people, officers to be here and do the investigation and get it resolved. And they're, they, it won't be just hit or miss, they will come up here specifically for that reason. Now, again, there's a whole lot involved in getting this, getting this completed, particularly with the evidence and the records, but they seem willing, they don't seem, they are willing to, to move forward with it. So, again, I understand later in that we're, we're gonna start the process of, of the dissolution by making a motion to do so, and then we can, you know, we can move forward with that. But, we know we have a, we know we have a plan, we have an agency that's going to provide us with seven-day-a-week coverage, 24 hours a day. So, I, I think it's, it's gonna be very beneficial for the village, and it's also gonna save us an awful lot of money. And that's, I think, was the intention that we all had when we voted for this proposition, and I think that's proving itself, hopefully will prove itself to be, to be that thing. So, um, as those meetings progress, I'll keep you guys filled in on what's going on, and the particulars about the personnel, we can, personnel involved, we can discuss during the executive session. So, there'll be some more, some more information about particular employees during the executive session, okay? All right. All right, Trustee Baffey, you asked about property liens for bad utilities. My comment was good enough, and I just got this when I got, I was in Plaschek all morning this. So, here's the, there are lengthy explanations. If you, if you go to the second page, page two, and the first full paragraph starts off with Article 1480, you go through the last sentence, it says, "Therefore, unless a village made, in the exercise of its home rule powers, adopt a local law authorizing unpaid electric charges to be levied and collected with annual general village taxes, it is without authority to do so." Now, that goes into, skip down to the, let's see, one, two, the fourth full paragraph that starts with "based upon," and look in the last sentence. It says, "However, in our opinion, a local law enacted pursuant to Section 10, 1, may not provide that a lien for delinquent electric charges shall be enforced with the annual village taxes." You'll find, you'll find the rest of the legal site in this. Basically, their opinion is, we can't, regardless of what we tried to do, we can't place a lien for electric charges. So, that, that's a really long, winning, well-documented response, but that's the answer that they gave us, okay? I know that's what you were looking for.
On some of these, their names are on the list and stuff like that, some of them are deceased, I noticed.
Is that right?
Yes.
Well, what I was thinking of, this does answer, this answers the easy way out, which would have been to be able to put it on the tax like the, like the water sewer careers. But what I was thinking of, that would have been a great idea if we could have just passed a local law and done that. What I was asking about, 'cause I didn't think of this, was, um, just go to court, have the judge put a lien on it, if he rules in our favor that they owe us the money? Or does it just go, would it just go against the person that owes us the money?
Go against the person?
Yeah. We, yeah.
We'd go against the owner. Right, because, well, probably 95% of the names on that list are renters.
I wasn't gonna go against the small residential things. I was thinking, every few years, we get a fairly substantial commercial careers, and it's usually because the business is still there, but it just changed owners on the paper who owns it. And I was just looking for a way for the village ratepayers to recover the money they're losing on that every year. I mean, no, it wouldn't be, you know, you're not gonna go after somebody for $30 or $40, but.
Even like, I think, the 1,700s you were looking at.
Yeah.
You start figuring in legal fees for the attorney, and it's, you know, they, they...
Well, what I wanted to know was what would be involved, you know, this was like a test case, not to see if it's feasible for in the future, is like, do attorneys send a letter to the person? Does the attorney go to court and make a, like a small claims court thing, or have one of us do it, or some village employee goes small, you know, how would this work? Can we streamline it down so that it's not a cumbersome thing to do? That's what I was thinking of.
Yeah, we, both the administrator and I spoke to, helped both the man seeing me into the bar with an X, and approached it in that manner. They all said, I heard, some other options, and they just feel it's a losing proposition now, that case law doesn't support it, and you're not gonna be able to do it. So, I mean, that's their opinion. If we could, you know, we can pay our way to research it if we want, the board wants to do that, but based on their statewide experience, they say it's, it's a no-go. But, again, you know, there's, whatever, what I mean...
I was just thinking, you know...
There is no easy way to...
You look at it a different way. Anybody that ever moved out of the village doesn't need to pay his last month's electric bill. Let it go a couple of months and then leave.
But if they ever move back.
Well, yeah, I was talking to people moving the floor or something. No reason to ever pay.
Well, you know, I guess if...
Some people got a conscience.
Yeah, if you believe it, I mean, you're suggesting that, just that, that, you know, people are innately bad and they're, they're gonna do that, I think that's a little skeptical, but it's possible. But I think, no, it is, it is going this.
There is another avenue that other towns and other states have done, is our tax collector here has no initiative, or, you know, he can go after these people in his own, you know, on the clock time, whatever, but you don't have anything compelling behind you to drive to collect these things in the course of your regular duties. In some cities and towns and states, they give the tax collector 10% of the tax bill that they collect. That's the initiative for this person to work even overtime on their own, depending on the size of the bill, it's a $1,700 bill.
Yeah, but that's, that's something established by state statute. They give them permission to do that, you can't...
It's probably being a bounty hunter, and we don't have that...
The village couldn't, we couldn't pass our own law for that fact.
That's, that's just not... I don't have a gun, so...
I'm lying, you are.
The last thing we have is, the last thing I have for you is the May Champlain Moore C.M.E.S., I said C.M.E.S., not C.E.M.S. If you look at Ross's Point, on the top there, total calls were 17 calls, 18 were ALS, five were advanced life support requiring a tech, five were basic life support, four were not transported, or no linkups, and no, no responses. Loaded miles, you can see 367.7. Um, this is, again, just for Ross's Point, and you can see the response time in the bottom, one minute for paid, and four minutes for volunteer firemen to get there. So, again, you can see the number of calls are gone down a little bit, but they're staying on average pretty much the same, 90. The town of Champlain has the most, and we're fortunate this month not to have...
Good in the village.
We had 17.
I said that's a good number, correct?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's good, and we're, you know, everything's been covered, there hasn't been, we haven't had to require mutual aid, and for the times when we had it, so it's been a positive thing. So, we've asked to copy this report, it'll get sent to me, and I'll, I'll forward to you by email each time as soon as I get it, rather than print it out and write it to people. But I got this late, so I wanted you to have it, and that's, that's what we, that's what we have. That came from Captain Corey there. So, that's all I have. Trustee Arnold?
Uh, the only thing I have is, I see that we're putting internet service in some of the buildings and stuff. What is, is that a budgeted item, or whatever, or?
Oh, we have, we have, we agreed to get those computers from the county at a reduced rate, and we're, we're providing internet access to the buildings that don't have it now. Now, if you wanna, a part breaks, you wanna get, find your phone, find it, you can, you know, you don't have to start getting on the phone and calling, it's going to the computer, go, "Bink, there it is," you know? It's, it's to streamline businesses, that's what it's all about, I mean...
What's the cost coming down this? 'Cause this was discussed before I was on the board, take it.
Uh, do you have a, do you have our, is that part of our package? How, how's it working?
The computers from the county were...
No, no, the, the...
What's the internet cost?
Oh, the internet cost? The same cost as everyone else, it's 30, is it $32?
Yeah, we get some kind of deals, I'm not really sure.
How many did we put in?
Down there.
I'm sorry?
How many internets did we put in? Just one?
Yeah, it's just one connection, and, and we have a contract with, with Primelec to provide that, and we have a...
So, each one, like, if you do something in your house, it's, each one is more...
If you have internet, if you have internet service to your house, and, you know, you have a router, then, you know, you can hook up 10 computers, and it still costs the same thing, it's not...
Okay. So, I was saying, there's no increase in...
Right.
Monthly cost after the initial hardware was acquired?
No.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
All right.
I'd like to have a, okay, I'll do that later.
No, no.
During the executive session?
No.
Yeah, at the end of the meeting, when it comes up there, you can move up the motion and whether we do that. Okay, Trustee Dart?
I have nothing.
Trustee Dart?
I have one item. I got a resolution. Resolution 2017-27, a resolution to abolish the village police department. Whereas the Village of Ross's Point, as part of their continuing effort to identify cost savings, has undertaken an evaluation and analysis of the economic practicality of maintaining the Village of Ross's Point Police Department, and the impacts, both positive and negative, upon the village residents and taxpayers if the village police department were to be dissolved. And whereas pursuant, pursuant to Section 8-800 of the village law of the state of New York, the Board of Trustees may abolish the police department established pursuant to this section by local law, subject to permissive referendum, and the department shall be deemed abolished as presented in such proposition. And whereas a resolution abolishing the village police department takes effect on or about September 1st, 2017. And whereas the Board of Trustees of the Village of Ross's Point has thoroughly considered the impact of a decision to dissolve the village police department, and now therefore be resolved that the village, the office of the Village of Ross's Point Police Department be, and the same hereby is abolished on or about September 1st, 2017. And be it further resolved that this resolution is adopted, and the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to publish it and post a notice of such adoption in abstract in accordance with the law.
Okay. And in accordance with the law, the village clerk did a little more research on this. We, this resolution, basically, you're making, you're making a motion to dissolve the police department. What we need to do with this, and this is a draft written by the, the village clerk, it has to go to the attorney for, like we did for the, for the court, attorney will sign off on it, then we will publish this. We can't put it in the paper until they publish it. And then, we have 30 days to wait before we have a public hearing, and it's during that 30 days, if a permissive referendum is, is brought about by 20%, a petition signed by 20% of the elected, excuse me, registered voters in the Village of Ross's Point, there's 1,840. And they're not all here now, but they are registered, so it would be, figured out, 370 people. But if that doesn't come in within the 30 days, then we have the public hearing, and it's at that point that, that we, that we adopt this resolution to abolish the police department. So, tonight, if, if you, this resolution, can you say, you're making a motion to abolish the village police departments, start that process?
Yes, I'll make a motion to start the process to dissolve the police department.
Okay.
Second?
And any more discussion on that? What we're gonna do is send this resolution, if, you know, authorize the clerk to send this resolution to the attorney, as soon as it's approved, without further approval, have them publish it at the earliest possible time. And then, 30 days subsequent to that, we will, we will have a... And then thirty days subsequent to that, we will, we will have a public hearing regarding that. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You're gonna roll call out for the motion? Okay, let's do that. Okay, Trustee Arnold?
Aye.
Trustee Dart?
Aye.
Trustee Bernard?
Aye.
Trustee Duff?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is carried. Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thanks, the sheriff. Okay, and Trustee Baffet?
Nothing, fine.
Okay. Do you have any other reports, Mr. President?
Just wanna report the tax bill, the tax bills were mailed out last week.
Okay.
I thought you just started.
They're flying back in. Yeah. It's not gonna go away that, just yet, right? Okay. Clark?
I do, I just want to announce that the village wide yard sale is June twenty-fourth and I have put posters out and it's on the website. If anyone's interested in being put on the map, they can call me, give me a description and their address. And the maps will be distributed on June twenty-second at the library, they'll be at the village office and I'll distribute them to two of the businesses in the village.
Okay, just to cap that off, June twenty-fourth is the village wide garage sale. Anyone that wants to be put on the map for this garage sale is to contact you at the village office. And then they may pick up those maps either at the library, the village office on the twenty-second. Okay, thank you. And Administrator?
Yes, the Ross's Point Samuel D. Champlain Center Stage has published their summer two thousand and seventeen concert series, running July sixth through August fourth. They have a full agenda and the, the brochures are at the village office if anyone would like one.
That's the only plan of distribution?
They're online also.
Okay, so if anyone wants to know the schedule for the stage events this summer, check it online or go get a piece of paper.
Alice is coming back. And Frank Sinatra.
And Handcray. Mr. Monkey?
Yeah, just an update on the water plant. Our rehab project is going very well. We have everything dismantled in the first pump that we're doing, all the old fittings are out, we're starting to put the new fittings back together. On the atom system, one of the major problems that the engineers were concerned about were the fittings that were in the pit, we have those all cemented, all in place, they feel better about the condition of that. But our valves and our, you know, check valves and our gate valves are gonna be here this week, so we can finish putting that one pump together and start taking the second pump apart. So that project is going very well. It's slow, it's heavy work, but you're doing a good job. There's gonna be a small electric outage next Monday from State Street to Best Friends, only on Lake Street right here, is to change a switch out here by Cheesy Hardware. We have our new switch in, we're gonna change that Monday morning.
How long do you anticipate that, how long is it to be?
I figured about an hour, hour and a half, tops.
So Monday morning, about what time?
From seven-thirty to, Donna, you publish that till?
Until nine-thirty.
Till nine-thirty. They left a two-hour window.
Seven-thirty to nine-thirty, great.
All right, and, so we're gonna change that switch out Monday morning. We got calls on topsoil on Chapman Street when we put the lines underground. The topsoil is so wet that we're trying to work in between the raindrops. We have the sewer project done up on the upper end of Chapman Street, we put the last manhole in Friday. There's also some topsoil to do on Smith Street where we put the water line in last year, it's just, they gotta understand the weather has not been cooperative with us.
I do understand that. And you did mention, you did mention that you're gonna be putting the, trying to get that equipment in out there in the lawn, the red trail, right? Put footfalls foundations in?
Yes, hopefully by the end of this week, it'll dry up enough, Wednesday, Thursday, and come Friday, we can pour that cement out, out here for the benches and the exercise equipment.
That'd be great. Will we be able to use anything you dig out to fill in, like some of those lower earths, rather than hallway?
Yes, we have that whole waste pile back there also that I'd like to get out of there and utilize some of that.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for me out there?
Is the flagpole gonna go in before the fifteenth of June up at railroad station?
Yes.
Okay.
The flagpole and the plaque.
I ain't worried about the plaque, it's the flagpole.
I guess-
We need to have them both.
Before the fifteenth of June?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
At the last meeting, when you were absent, we had a question about a, a switch in the sewer plant you were gonna put in or something?
Yes.
How are you?
Is that it?
They installed that Friday. We found that, we put the new piece of equipment in and there's still a failure in the pump. So we gotta call into the pump, people that rebuilt the pump for us in Albany, they're gonna send a tech up to replace the switch. So we are protected. There's two parts to this little mechanism that we put in and the pump is protected now. It's just, it's called a spill control, that if liquid gets internally in the motor, it will shut it down, but if the motor overheats, this side is working. So it is all installed.
Okay.
We gotta just fine tune it a little bit.
So pump company, in other words, it's their fault that the other part doesn't work and they're gonna fix that under warranty or something?
Right, well, they're worried about how we installed it because if you tip the pump, it's like a float internally in the pump, so they're gonna come up and take it apart and check their mechanism in there and make sure it's working. But everything that we did tested out on our end, so.
Okay, thank you.
We're in good shape. Anything else?
Okay, we'll open the meeting to public comment and let you make the comments. Okay, with that, I believe, Trustee Arnold, I want to make a motion to-
I'd like to make a motion to have an executive session.
To discuss employment history with a particular person?
Person, yeah.
One second.
Discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's carried. Need a motion to adjourn executive session to clear the room?
Make a motion.
Second.
Discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion's carried.